Last week, we said that, you know, people talk about, did Jesus ever say that he was God? And one of the things we said was, look, if Jesus had gone about saying to people, I'm God, I'm God, I'm God, I mean, would people have believed him? I mean, would you believe somebody that walked up to you and said, you know, I'm God? You wouldn't. The best ways to know, Jesus himself said, by their fruit, you shall know them. By their fruit, in other words, by your works. So it's the works of a person that actually speak for the person. And the works, you know, will essentially inform us about the kind of person that we're dealing with. So Jesus said that, you know what, if you won't believe me, first of all, he said, even if I testify of myself, my testimony is true because I am not doing it alone, my father is with me. But if you won't believe my testimony, at least do this. Believe the works, because the works that I do, they speak of me. Okay, and so we're going to be talking about some of the works. We started last week, we said that one of the very important things that Jesus did was Lazarus's, raising Lazarus from the dead. We saw that when Jesus heard that Lazarus was ill, he decided to stay behind wherever he was for a couple of days, and then started to make his way there. By the time he got there, I think four days had passed and Lazarus's body had decomposed, had started to decompose. When Jesus said, open the tomb and let him come out, the first argument that came up as a lot, but by this time, there is a stench, because, you know, he's been dead for a few days. Then Jesus said, did I not say to you that if you believe, you will see the glory of the Lord? You see, when we started this Bible study almost a year ago, I think we started in March 2023, so it's almost a year now. When we started this Bible study almost a year ago, we said that the glory of the Lord, even though it can be revealed in the radiance, in the brightness, that the glory of the Lord is revealed more fully in his works manifested through us. That God in, 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 Jesus became human. For one of the reasons why he became human was to express the glory of God, to manifest it. So that the glory isn't just some light shining, but it's shining through works. So that's why the Bible says, let your light shine. You let your light so shine amongst men, that they may see your good works and give glory to your father. So the glory that God wants to reveal is revealed in his works, in the things that he does. Okay, and we're going to be seeing some of that here. Now, it was the feast of dedication in Jerusalem, and it was winter. And Jesus walked in the temple in Solomon's porch. Then the Jews surrounded him and said to him, how long do you keep us in doubt? If you are the Christ, tell us plainly. Jesus answered them, I told you, and you do not believe. The works that I do in my father's name, they bear witness of me. John, chapter 10, verses 22 to 25. We've said this before, this is by way of repetition, recap. Okay. We all know from John's gospel that Jesus's first miracle was turning water into wine. Let's read about it, let's read it. Pardon me, on the third day, there was a wedding day, there was a wedding in Cana of Galilee. Now, when you're reading the Bible, or when somebody quotes a passage like this, and it says, on the third day, the first question you have to ask yourself is, third day after what? So the first, those two days before, what was going on? Where the two days before, that's when Jesus met his, the first disciples. He went to the place where John the Baptist was baptizing. And when John saw him, he said, this is the lamb of the, the lamb of God who takes away the sins of the earth. And two of his disciples left and followed Jesus. Later on, Jesus brought them to this wedding. Okay, so Jesus came with his first disciples to this wedding, his mother was also there. And when they ran out of wine, the mother of Jesus said to him, they have no wine. Jesus said to her woman, what does your concern have to do with me? My hour has not yet come. Let's pause and reflect, you know, this statement, some people deem it to be rude, but that's because they're interpreting it within our context. In our context, in our African culture, you don't talk to your mother like that, as simple as that. You don't talk to even strangers like that, it's just not the way you talk. But the Jews spoke differently. So I think it's important that we understand this is, and a lot of the time, Jews answered, and they still do, they answer questions with questions, so you ask a question, and then they also ask a question. So asking of questions is very, very normal. Now, so Jesus says, they have no wine. Why would Jesus be saying to her, to him, we have no wine? Unless she sort of knew that he was capable of performing a miracle there. And I also suspect that the Holy Spirit was using her in this particular instance to give Jesus a nudge. You see, Jesus, last week, Aaron asked this question about, how could Jesus be both fully man and fully God? How could he reconcile the two things? Well, Jesus came to the earth, he was God, but he came to the earth as human. And as human, he had to be in total submission to his father. Remember, we read about the angel of the Lord in the Old Testament. The angel of the Lord was acting on his own authority. He rebuked the whole of Israel, he told them, I did not keep, you have, you've broken my covenant, therefore, I also did not drive away the Canaanites from before you. So the angel of the Lord there was acting on his authority, he was not seeking permission from heaven, he was just acting instantly, and we saw that no angel behaves like that. Therefore, the angel of the Lord must be the Lord. Okay, and many people on the call that day said, they believed that was Jesus, the second member of the Trinity. Now, here you are, Jesus is being urged by his mother to do something about the lack of wine. And he says, my hour has not come yet. The question is, what sign was Jesus waiting for? What was he looking for? Why, you know, why did he not act like the angel of the Lord in the Old Testament? The angel of the Lord who visited Abraham? You know, he's not labeled as the angel of the Lord by essentially the same person. He visited Abraham, and Abraham negotiated with him. If you find 50 people in Sodom, we'll use to destroy it. If you find 40, if you find 30, if you find 20. And each, each time, the Lord said, if I find 20, yes, I'll spare them. If I find 10, I'll spare them. So you could see that flexibility in being able to make decisions on the spot. Why? Because the angel of the Lord, in the Old Testament, he was acting as God with full authority. But here, Jesus had come to be fully man, and therefore, he had to submit to God as a man word. It was not a question of not having the right, it was a question of laying down that right, like Philippians 2, though he was God, he was in the very form of God, yet he humbled himself to become a servant, to the point of death, even the death on the cross, which involved humiliation and shame, in addition to pain and suffering. So Jesus emptied himself and came to the earth to be like one of us. And like one of us, he could not simply wake up and say, okay, I'll do a miracle here, I'll do a miracle there. No, he had to wait, he had to be instructed, as you and I have to be. You've got to remember that Jesus lived his life as you and me. Adam failed, Eve failed, so God sent in the last Adam, that's Jesus. And so the last Adam on earth had to live like Adam should have lived. Adam didn't have the authority of the angel of the Lord. So Jesus had to humble himself, bring himself down to the level of Adam, and take instructions. And until he could sense, the Holy Spirit was saying, now is the moment to do something, he wasn't going to do it. But you could see that the Holy Spirit used his mother to give him a nudge. And many of you would have experienced this in your lives. I've experienced it many, many, many times. I'll give you an example, this very Bible study is an example. I have always wanted to do a Bible study. But I never felt that the time was right, or the conditions were right, or that, you know, there were lots of things that I always felt that were not in place. But God used someone on this very call to say, do it, do it, do it, the time is right. And I sensed in my spirit that the time was right, I got confirmation. So God can use people to give you a nudge. It's not necessarily because you are not sensitive, but sometimes he will use other people to give you a nudge, to make you know that it's okay. Because often, when that happens, and then you get confirmation, you have two. You have two witnesses, you have that person's word, then you have yours, which will make you even more confident in what you're doing. Okay, so God uses people, and I believe the Lord used Jesus, I used Mary to give Jesus that nudge, that now it's time, and look at what she did. She seemed really certain in herself that it was the right time. She had lived with Jesus for 30 years. I don't know whether she had ever made this request before. But let's not forget that the angels spoke to Mary and told Mary what Jesus's mission would be. So she knew. But if you thought that the angel, you know, the angel didn't tell Mary a whole lot, it looks like it's God's way of doing things that, you know, he says more through prophets than he does through angels. That's a very interesting thing, I've got to study it. But angels, the angel's word to Mary was quite brief. The angel's word to Zachariah was quite brief. But go and read Luke, chapter 1, and see the long prophecy that came out of Zachariah's mouth, and the long prophecy that came out of Mary, Mary's own mouth. Through Mary's own mouth, God revealed what Jesus's mission would be. Through Zachariah, God revealed what Jesus's mission would be. Then when Jesus was eight days old, he was brought to the temple, and who did they find there? Anna, the prophetess, she spoke over him. Then Simon also spoke and prophesied, he even prophesied Jesus's death. The manner of the death, the fact that he would be pierced. So you could see clearly that Mary had, the Bible says that when all those things happened, Mary kept these words in her heart. That's very, very important. In other words, she pondered them, she thought, hmm, what does this mean? I've really got to think about this. Remember that, you know, six months earlier, she had gone to visit Elizabeth, her cousin also. And when she went to see Elizabeth, Elizabeth greeted her and asked, what have I done to deserve a visit from the mother of my lord? So she knew that a child that she was carrying was going to have an incredible mission. A mission that would save the whole nation, but 30 years she had to wait. And I don't know what was going on within that 30-year period, whether she was constantly nagging him, when is it, what are you going to do? I don't know. But it's entirely possible that she was sensitive to the spirit enough to know that the right time will come. In any case, what we do know is that on this day, she felt this was the moment. So she said to the servants, whatever he says to you, do it. Now, there were set there six water ports of stone, according to the manner of peregrations of the Jews, containing water, or 20, containing, sorry, containing 20 or 30 gallon apiece. Jesus said to them, fill the ports, water ports with water, and they filled them up to the brim. And he said to them, draw some out now and take it to the master of the feast. And they took it. When the master of the feast had tasted the water that was made wine, and did not know where it came from, but the servants who had drawn the water knew, the master of the feast called the bridegroom, and he said to him, every man at the beginning sets out the good wine. And when the guests are well drunk, then the inferior. You have kept the good wine until now. This beginning of signs Jesus did in Cana Galilee, Cana of Galilee, sorry, and manifested his glory, and his disciples believed in him. John, chapter 2, verse 1 to 11. So here we see Jesus turning water into wine. And we all know that it's an incredible miracle. The reason why it's an incredible miracle, let's do a quick lesson of chemistry. Okay, so in organic chemistry, we were taught, you know, the structure of things, in organic chemistry as well. The molecular structure of wine and the molecular structure of water. The lattice represents the atoms. Wine is made up of carbon, hydrogen, and oxygen, whereas water is just made up of hydrogen and oxygen. Now, even if you didn't study any chemistry at school, and so, you know, you're not familiar with the concept of molecular structure of objects. Every object, everything that you see around you is made up of atoms, which come together to form molecules. So you can think of an atom as the smallest particle, the smallest divisible component of any, of anything. Whether it's sand, whether it's the trees, even air is made up of atoms. Okay, but the atoms, they are different atoms out there. And depending on the kind of atoms that you have, when they come together, you get a different substance. When you put hydrogen and oxygen together, you get water. But when you add carbon, you can get something else, in this case, you get wine. There is no carbon here. There is no carbon here. There are two carbon atoms here. Where did Jesus get these two carbon atoms from? To make wine. You can think of many things, maybe at a time of the miracle, angels came and quickly emptied the vessels of water and put wine in there, but nobody saw wine being poured in there. The miracle is just baffling. Why did this particular, why did Jesus do this particular miracle? Or why did God the Father direct him to do this particular miracle? Because Jesus could have just told her, it's not my time, and we would never read about this story, would never have happened. It's clear that God the Father wanted this miracle done. And therefore, he directed Jesus to do it. And what was the message there? Because each of Jesus's miracles was telling a story. Jesus was saying, I have the same power, the same creative power, that brought things into existence that did not exist. I have that power, and I can bring carbon and atoms into existence that did not exist. I can make it happen. That was the very subtle miracle. The master of ceremonies took the wine, drank it, probably, who knows? God heavily drank that night, went home, and forgot about it all. But a mighty miracle had happened. The Bible says, this Jesus did, and he revealed his glory, he manifested his glory. What glory? Did his body shine? Did anything? No. He showed. This was one of the landmarks, one of the key moments. That miracle was speaking volumes. I am more than a prophet. I am God. That is what this miracle was saying, because no one else could have done it, no one has ever been able to do it. Jesus's miracles spoke volumes. And if we were to really ponder them, take our time and study each miracle in the Bible that Jesus did, we would, I mean, once you've done that, any doubts about Jesus's divinity will just disappear. You'll know instantly, no human could have done this. The making of wine requires growing the vine, maturation of the grape, harvesting, extracting the juice, fermentation, all of which take a long time. Most of all, good wine requires aging. So when they've made wine, they keep it in barrels and bottles, and they leave it to age. And the older it gets, the better, apparently, it is. We didn't know the difference. Jesus bypassed the entire timeframe in moments. In moments, they had, they didn't just have wine, they had wine that was very good. In the book of Job, God challenges Job to explain to him scientific processes and the order of the natural world. Read Job, chapter 8 onwards. The Lord just challenged his job. Do you know where the snow comes from? Do you know how snow is formed in the first place? Do you know where the bottom of the ocean is? Do you know how this is, what was God doing? You see, all of this is not described in detail in Genesis chapters 1 and 2. But in Job, God simply has this conversation with Job and says, do you know who did all these things? Do you know, were you there when it happened? He created substance. He created matter. He created everything that you can see, touch, you know, smell, taste, everything in existence. He created it, and he knows the very essence of everything. If God were having that conversation with Job today, and if Job were a scientist, this conversation might go something like this. What about this law of physics? What about the law of thermodynamics? What about quantum theory? What about, that's the conversation it would be having. In those days, they hadn't gone down to microscopic level, so the conversation was about natural phenomena. Today, the conversation would be about something much deeper, because he's the one that created it, and he knows all the laws of physics and chemistry and biology, because he put them there. He put them there, he is the creator. By turning water into wine, Jesus demonstrated his mastery over all of creation, which only God has. So we're going to the next miracle, calming the storm. On the same day, again, you see a passage there, on the same day. When you read that, go back and find out what had happened. On the same day, one evening had come, he said to them, let us cross over to the other side. This was one of Jesus's, you know, very busy days. Let us cross over to the other side. Now, when they had left the multitude, they took him along in the boat as he was, and other little boats were also with him, and a great storm, a windstorm arose, and the waves beat into the boat, so that it was already failing. But he was in the stern, asleep on a pillow, and they awoke him and said to him, teacher, do you not care that we are perishing? Then he arose and rebuked the wind and set to the sea. Peace, be still. And the wind ceased, and there was a great calm. But he said to them, why are you so fearful? How is it that you have no faith? And they feared exceedingly and said to one another, who can this be, that even the wind and the sea obey him? Mark 4:35 to 41. Let's take, you know, the time to dissect this passage. Jesus says to his disciples, let's cross over to the other side. Let's cross over to the other side. As far as he was concerned, it was a done deal. If they were going to the other side, they were going to get there. But there you are, on the way, suddenly, a storm broke out. Now, some people have linked this to the demoniac of the Gadara. You know, the man who was, you know, who called himself legend, because he was possessed by many demons. He was waiting on the other side of this journey. Whilst they were going there, he was the one they were going to go and meet over there. Okay, and people believe that, you know, the devil could sense that Jesus was coming his way, so he started the storm. I don't know, Bible doesn't say that, it's entirely possible, but we don't know. But here is the deal, Jesus went to sleep on a pillow. It was a tiring day, if you go and study John, chapter 4, and study that whole passage in the other gospels, you discover that he had had a very, very busy day, and he was tired. But instead of going home to sleep, he was going to go there. Clearly, the Holy Spirit had business to do on the other side of the lake. So Jesus went to sleep. But a storm broke out, and he did not wake up. Whether he was so tired that, you know, he was prepared to just sleep in the storm? Sometimes people are really tired, and even a storm won't wake them up. Or could it be possible that he wasn't really that deeply asleep? But was watching his disciples' reaction to the situation? You've got to remember that Jesus was very, very conscious of his earthly mission. And the most important mission, apart from his death on the cross, was raising disciples. That's what he came here for. Once he had died and resurrected, he was going to pass down his earthly mission to his disciples. They were going to inherit that mission. So discipling them was so important. Okay, and he did not pass up opportunities to disciple them. He would lead them to situations so that they would get an experience that would teach them. Because sometimes, an experience can teach somebody lessons that in a whole year of Bible study won't teach somebody. One experience can change everything. So the Lord gave his disciples experiences. Now here, he said, let's go over, whether he knew what was coming or not, we don't know. Whether he was deeply asleep or awake, we don't know. But it's very possible that he was awake, he wasn't completely asleep, and knew what was going on. Because when they woke him up, he just went straight to business. He rebuked the storm, he rebuked the wind and the sea, he spoke to the sea. He spoke to the sea, peace, be still. Now, before him, I mean, who had done that? We know Elijah used his mantle to split the Jordan River and walk, and walked across. And we know Elisha did exactly the same thing. You know, Elijah did some spectacular things. But to speak to the wind, to speak to the sea, tell it to shush. And then he does. The disciples hadn't seen anything like this before. And when it happened, they thought, who is this? Who can this be, that even the wind and the sea obey him? The answer was glaring, who else can do something like that? Let's read about the God of the Old Testament and what he does. You rule the raging of the sea, when its waves rise, you still them, that's Psalm 89, verse 9. Those who go down to the sea in ships, who do business in great waters, they see the works of the Lord and his wonders in the deep. For he commands and raises the stormy wind, which lifts up the waves of the sea. They mount up to the heavens, they go down again to the depths, their soul melts because of trouble. They reel to and fro, and They reel to and fro and stagger like a drunken man and are at their wit's end. Then they cry out to the Lord in their trouble and he brings them out of their distresses. He calms the storm so that its waves are still. Then they are glad because they are quiet, so he guides them to their desired haven. That's Psalm one oh seven, verses twenty-three to thirty. This psalm essentially talks about the different works of God. And if if and urges people to to glorify God for his wondrous works. So in the Old Testament, we learn that God is the one that calms the sea. He's the one that calms the sea. No one else has that power. You know, when tsunami hit Southeast Asia a few years ago, you know, and I heard of a testimony of a man who 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 commanded the sea in the in Jesus's name. Um, someone else's. No worries, no worries. Um, sorry, thank you for joining. Uh, God bless you and hopefully be able to listen to it later. Okay, so when that tsunami hit, guess what? Someone standing in the authority of the word of God apparently was able to cause the water not to advance any further. But that's only because the water was responding to the word of the Lord. The only person that calms the sea is the Lord. And here you are in New Testament, Jesus, what did he do? He calmed the sea and the people, the disciples wondered, who is this that can even do this? Next miracle. Walking on water. Pardon me, after feeding the crowd of five thousand, Jesus made his disciples get into a boat and go before him to the other side to beside her while he sent the people away. And when he had sent them away, he departed to the mountain to pray. Now, when evening came, the boat was in the middle of the sea and he was alone on the land. Then he saw them straining at rowing, for the wind was against them. Now about the fourth watch of the night, he came to them walking on the sea and would have passed them by. And when they saw him walking on the sea, they supposed it was a ghost and cried out. For they saw, for they all saw him and were troubled. But immediately he talked with them and said to them, be of good cheer at his eye, do not be afraid. Then he went up into the boats to them and the wind ceased. And they were greatly amazed in themselves beyond measure and marvel. For they had not understood about their lows because their heart was hardened. I don't know if you've noticed this, but this story in Mark's Gospel, chapter six, verses forty-six to fifty-two, leaves out an important element. That's what Peter walking on water. You'll find that in Matthew's account, Peter walking on water. Now, we know that Jesus first of all fed five thousand people. Five thousand men plus women and children. That itself, that miracle itself speaks of something. But immediately, that miracle had finished. He dispatched, he started dispatching the crowds and he told his disciples get to get into a boat and travel to the other side. Now, the interesting is that, the interesting thing is that in John's Gospel, I think, okay, Ma, at least Ma, Ma, Mark definitely mentions it. Jesus made his disciples get into the boat. In other words, they were not keen on getting in the boat. And it makes a lot of sense because as soon as they got in the boat, what? A storm broke out and the wind, the Bible says the wind was against them and they could not make any progress. Now, some of Jesus's disciples were fishermen. They fished on that very lake. It keeps mentioning calling it the sea, but it's really the Sea of Galilee. It was a lake. It was called the Sea of Galilee because it behaved like a sea. It could have waves, very, very high waves, as though it was the sea. Because of his geographical location, surrounded on one side by mountains. And so that creates a small microclimate within which, you know, you could have those sort of strong winds. And guess what? This storm broke out there. And his disciples were trying to row, you're trying to make progress, not not making any progress. Then Jesus came to them walking on the water. Let's pause and reflect. Did this, this miracle just happen? Did Jesus just do something? You see, with the feeding of the five thousand, you could say there was a need and he met that need. What need was met here? The disciples probably, you know, they, it felt like a pointless journey. They traveled at night. They traveled at night, you know, they talked about the fourth watch because they divided the night, you know, the twelve hours. They, you know, we talk day and night or day twelve hours, night twelve hours. And we divided into four sessions, three hours each. So first watch, second watch, third watch, fourth watch. Okay, so they were talking about the fourth watch. In other words, late, you were in the early hours of the morning. They had been traveling from night and not making much progress. Jesus comes walking on the water. What was the purpose of all of that? If if this wasn't supposed to teach them a lesson? You see, Jesus was on earth as a human being and yet he was God. He was on earth as if he had manifested his glory as he did on the Mount of Transfiguration. People would have been trippy. Look, the five thousand would have been like one million. People would have surrounded him. They would have been adoring him. Why did he not do that? If Jesus was walking about with a halo on top of his head, his clothes glistening, moving about, floating from left to you see people, you see false prophets do that. You see them wearing white robes and trying to behave pious and all of that. And you see the crowds that they attract. Why did Jesus not manifest his true glory so that people would be would follow him? I tell you what. I tell you why. Jesus didn't want to be a celebrity. Jesus didn't want to be a celebrity. How many times did they want to crown him king and he ran away? Because there are certain things that the carnal human being is attracted to. Everybody is fascinated by such things, with such things. And therefore, had Jesus come manifesting them, people would have gathered around him. But would they have really had true biblical faith in him? I don't think so. It would have been the celebrity love that we see today. Where you have celebrities that have five hundred million followers, one person. Five hundred million followers. How many of those people? I mean, let me not even go there. Jesus did not want that. He wanted true faith and true faith required that the people saw with the spiritual eyes, that you saw with the eyes of understanding that, no, this man is different. They needed to see behind or beneath the the clothing, beneath the external, the exterior. They needed to see through and discover, come on, this person is different. So when Jesus was in the area of Caesarea Philippi, he turned to his disciples and he asked this question. Who do men say that I am? Some of them said John the Baptist, some said Jeremiah, some said, you know, it's one of the prophets. Then Jesus said, but who do you, you say that I am? That was Jesus's issue. Instead of telling them, I am God, I am God, which would not have led to true biblical faith. He manifested his glory in his works so that gradually there would be a process of conversion in their hearts until they saw, come on, that must be God. And at that point, that would be true biblical faith. So Jesus kept chipping away with his miracles, with his teachings, miracles, teachings. He just kept doing it. And then he tested from time to time, he tested them to see, where are these guys? Are they getting it? Are they realizing who I am? Then Simon Peter said, you are the Messiah, the son of the living God. And Jesus said, flesh and blood has not revealed this to you, but my father. In other words, you could not have made these deductions yourself. You couldn't have come to this conclusion yourself unless you'd been guided. And why? Because he did not come presenting himself in such a way that you look at him and say, you are God. Therefore, the Holy Spirit had to reveal to me. And that's what Jesus was waiting for. That the Holy Spirit working on people's hearts gradually, as they saw the miracles bit by bit. The Holy Spirit would be chipping away, chipping away, chipping away until the time came when people would say, this must be the son of God. We will see an example of that very soon. Now let's read something from the Old Testament. God is wise in heart and mighty in strength, who has hardened himself against him and prospered. He removes the mountains and they do not know when he returns them in his anger. He shakes the earth out of its place and its pillars tremble. He commands the sun and it does not rise. He seals off the stars. He alone spreads out the heavens and treads on the waves of the sea. See now, Job chapter nine, verse forty-eight. He alone does what treads on the waves of the sea. What did Jesus do? He walked on water. Jesus's miracles were not random acts of showmanship. They were designed to say, hey, only God can do it. So if I'm doing this, what does that say to you? He was gradually getting people to see his true identity. So last week, we learnt about Lazarus's, um, Jesus raising Lazar from the dead. So we're not going to talk about that today. Next, working on the Sabbath. Now it happened on the second Sabbath after the first. Again, when you come across a phrase like that, always ask yourself, which one was the first Sabbath? What was it about? In Luke's Gospel, you'll discover that the first Sabbath, Jesus was in his own hometown of Nazareth. They rejected him. He went to the synagogue on the Sabbath and they rejected him. Then he performed a miracle on the Sabbath. Found earlier, also in Luke's Gospel. And then this is the third one. So really, when it says the second Sabbath is referring to be the second Sabbath in Capenium. The first Sabbath recorded in Luke's Gospel was in Nazareth. But this is referring to the second Sabbath in Capenium. Because he he just shows you the Luke in his Gospel, he was following things chronologically. So he's just getting you to see that after this Sabbath, the next Sabbath, this is what happened. Okay, now it happened on the second Sabbath after the first, that he went through the grain fields and his disciples plucked the heads of grain and ate them, rubbing them in their hands. And some of the Pharisees said to them, why are you doing what is not lawful to do on the Sabbath? But Jesus answering them said, have you not heard? So have you not read, sorry? What David did when he was hungry, he and those who were with him. How he went into the house of God, took and ate the showbread and also gave some to those with him, which is not lawful for any but the priests to eat. And he said to them, the son of man is also lord of the Sabbath. Luke says six, verse one to five. So we all know how God gave the commandment regarding the Sabbath. Where he said that the Lord created the heavens and the heavens and he had seven days. And on the sixth, in six days, sorry, and on the seventh day, he rested. Therefore, this, and he hallowed that day and therefore that day shall be holy unto you. You shall also keep the Sabbath. God said, this is the day I rested and you shall also rest. That comes along someone and starts doing something on the Sabbath. And the disciples pull him up and he says, I am lord of the Sabbath. I mean, I don't know, I don't know about you, but this is one of the clearest statements about his identity. The Lord of the Sabbath. The Sabbath belongs to the Lord. It's holy. This commandment was part of the ten, the big ten commandments. Jesus said, I am lord also of the Sabbath. In other words, I am, I rule over it. Unless he was God, how could he make such a statement? Another time, Jesus went into the synagogue and a man with a shriveled hand was there. Some of them were looking for a reason to accuse Jesus, so they watched him closely to see if he would heal him on the Sabbath. Jesus said to the man with a shriveled hand, stand up in front of everyone. Then Jesus asked them, which is lawful on the Sabbath, to do good or to do evil, to save life or to kill? But they remained silent. He looked around them in anger and deeply distressed at their stubborn hearts, said to them, stretch out your hand. He stretched it out and his hand was completely restored. Then the Pharisees went out and began to plot with the herodians how they might kill Jesus. Mark chapter three, verse one to six. Next example, Jesus reveals his glory. Now it came to pass about eight days after these things. Eight days after these things. In other words, there was a time when Jesus was teaching. And eight days after that, they took Peter, James, John and went up on the mountain to pray. As he prayed, the appearance of his face was altered and his robe became white and glistening. This is what I was talking about, that Jesus could have done this every day and attracted large crowds. But he knew that's not how you make true converts. Moses's face was shining. Do you remember in the Old Testament? His face was shining. The people said, cover it up. They didn't really want anything to do with, with, it didn't change them. It didn't convert them. Seeing Moses's glistening face did not convert them. Seeing Jesus's glistening clothes would not have converted anybody. And behold, two men talked with him, who were Moses's, Moses and Elijah, who appeared in glory and spoke of his disease, which he was about to accomplish at Jerusalem. But Peter and those with him were heavy with sleep and they were fully awake. They saw his glory. When they were fully awake, they saw his glory and the two men who stood with him. Then it happened as they were parted from him, that Peter said to Jesus, master, it is good for us to be here. And let us make three tabernacles, one for you, one for Moses and one for Elijah, not knowing what he said. While he was saying this, a cloud came and overshadowed them and they were fearful as they entered the cloud. And a voice came out of the cloud saying, this is my beloved son. Hear him. When the voice had ceased, Jesus was found alone. But they kept quiet and told no one in those days, any of the things that they had seen. Luke nine, verses twenty-eight to thirty-six. In this example, God the Father spoke, but he did not reveal his glory. Instead, the glory of the Son was revealed. And God, if if we ever had needed any proof of who Jesus was, God spoke from heaven. Later on, Peter will write about this in his letter. He said, we saw it. We were there when he was transfigured before us. He was transferred. God just gave them a snapshot to just three of the disciples that they may know that he was truly God. Lord, why didn't you do it before the whole of Jerusalem? Why didn't you get everyone to see it? You see, for those that are truly hungry to know God, are thirsty, they desire to see, God can reveal things like that. Because he knows it will only assist them. But to the masses, who haven't opened their hearts to him, he won't do that. They will, they will turn him into a celebrity. For the son of man will come in the glory of his father with his angels and then he will reward each according to his works. This is just talking about Jesus's glory. Okay. Why Jesus performed miracles? And Jesus answered. And Jesus answered them and said, "Most assuredly, I say to you, the Son can do nothing of himself, but that he sees his father, but what he sees his father do, for whatever he does, the Son also does in like manner. For the Father loves the Son and shows him all the things that he himself does. And he will show him greater works than these, that you may marvel." John five, nineteen to twenty. Jesus' miracles were not random acts. They were designed to convey a message. And Jesus said, "Greater works than these will you see, that you may marvel." We all know about the sermon and the mount. Jesus would say, "You have heard it said, but I say unto you, you have heard it said, but I say unto you." It never dawned on me that Jesus, in those statements, was saying that he was God. Let's see how. "You have heard that it was said, 'You shall love your neighbor and hate your enemy.' But I say to you, love your enemies; bless those who curse you; do good to those who hate you; and pray for those who spitefully use you and persecute you, that you may be sons of your Father in heaven. For he makes his son rise on the evil and on the good, and sends rain on the just and on the unjust. For if you love those who love you, what reward have you? Do not even the tax collectors do the same? And if you greet your brethren only, what do you do more than others? Do not even the tax collectors do so? Therefore you shall be perfect, just as your Father in heaven is perfect." Now, let's pause and reflect. Jesus is offering commentary on laws of Moses. Moses taught them, the people, how to hate their enemies, because they were going to possess a land, and if they started having affection for the people whose land they were going to possess, there was no way that they would be able to possess it. Jesus says, "But I say unto you, love your enemies." You can't have enemies. You know, this is so relevant in our day, because people pray down fire upon their enemies. People actually believe they have enemies. People go to prayer meetings to attack their enemies. It's clear they haven't studied Jesus' words. Jesus said, "I say to you, love your enemies and bless those who curse you." It's not enough that you don't, you know, you shouldn't pray fire upon them. No, he says, you know enough that you shouldn't call down fire on them. He says, bless them. Bless them. Pray for those who spitefully use you and persecute you. Pray for them. One such person, who used to persecute believers, kill them, was Saul. And the person that he put to death, probably the last person he put to death, was who? Stephen. And when Stephen was dying, what did he say? "Lord, forgive them, for they don't know what they're doing." And instead of that prayer, letting Saul off the hook, do you know what that prayer did? It tormented Saul. In Acts, chapter nine, whilst he was on his way to Damascus, the Lord revealed himself to him. "Saul, Saul, why are you persecuting me?" He said, "Lord, who are you, Lord?" "So I am Jesus, whom you are persecuting. It is too hard for you to kick against the goats." What does that mean? A goat is a stick, a long stick with a pointy edge, that's used to poke animals and get them to head in a particular direction, especially, I think, when they are trying, going to slaughter them. And to kick against the goat, it means that you are kicking against the pointed edge. Honestly, you can't do that, especially unless you're wearing some Timberland boots. You're going to hurt your feet. Jesus said, "It's too hard for you to kick against it." Something is guarding you, and you are resisting. I believe that was Stephen's prayer. The persecutions that the believers faced. And instead of calling down judgment upon Saul, so the Lord would destroy him, they prayed for his forgiveness. Maybe they prayed for his conversion. I'd like to think so. And the Lord responded. You see, when we pray according to the will of God, the Bible says, "We have what we have asked of him." If we are praying, praying, and praying, and not getting answers, maybe we need to pause and reflect. Maybe we are praying amiss. Maybe we are praying contrary to his will. He says, "Pray for those who persecute you. Don't wish evil upon them." Am I sitting here suggesting that it's easy? No. When people treat me badly, I don't sit there and think, "I want to pray for you, and I want to bless." I don't do that pretending thing where I say, "You hit me, I say, bless you." I don't. Because God is willing to pretend. Rather, I go to God and say, "Lord, I don't, I don't feel like praying for this guy or blessing, but I know that this is what you want, and I know that you live in me. And your word tells me that you work in me to do, for both to will and to do of your good pleasure. So Father, empower me, enable me to love this person." And then the Bible says, "The love of God is shared abroad in our hearts." That enables me to then say, "I'm not even going to hold anything against you." I don't have to pretend to love him, or pretend to love her. To pretend to love this person that has hurt me, I just need to submit to God. And he gives me his love to be able to love those people. That's how we are supposed to live. And Jesus said, "This is how you are supposed to live." "You heard it said, simple, eye for an eye, tooth for a tooth, do this, do that." I'm telling you, your goal is to become like your Father. And your Father, he causes his Son to rise upon the evil, as well as the good. He sends rain on the land of the just and that of the unjust. He doesn't make a distinction. He is good. And he says, "Be imitators of God. Become like your Father." So clearly, we need to really pause and reflect on the kind of Christianity that is being practiced on our continent. That is what we are surrounded with. Everywhere you go, whether it's a prayer meeting, whether it's a sermon, you're constantly hearing about revenge. That's what it is. And God says, "Revenge is mine." Why are you competing with God? He says, "Revenge is mine. I will repay." Why are you competing with God? Your job is to forgive. Your job is to not hate. Your job is to pray for those that persecute you. Don't pretend to love them. Ask God for grace. Let his love fill you, and then do your bit. And leave the people to God, because he knows how to turn them around. He knows how to change. There are many people who, if they got the Lord, had brought down his judgment upon them. Many of us would never have been born again in the first place, because we would have died long ago. Somebody's prayer would have killed us long ago. We are here today because God didn't listen to those prayers. Let's not waste our breath making those prayers. Let's rather love. Let God's love flow through us. And then we will find ourselves working hand in hand with God. And when you work hand in hand with God, that's when you get a result. Now, but the point of bringing this particular passage into our discourse is this. Moses gave commandments. We know Moses climbed the mountain. He spoke to God. He saw God face to face. He came down. He gave commandments. So who is this that could come and correct Moses' commandment? Do you understand me? When you study the Old Testament, you'll discover the Old Testament prophets never offered commentary on Moses' laws. Never. They only rebuked people for not keeping the commandments. You want to read Jeremiah? "You did not do this. You did not do that. You did not do this." There's nowhere where Jeremiah comes out and says, "You know what? Moses said this, but I say unto you." That's not the job of a prophet. So who was this that could come and offer commentary on God's word in the Old Testament? Unless he was the one that gave it. Unless, the one that he said about divorce is the one that is most intriguing. Do you remember? The Pharisees came to him and said, "Moses said that you should give the woman the bill of divorce, and thus divorce her. What do you say?" He said, "Well, Moses, because of the hardness of your heart, told you that you could do that." How could he give such a commentary unless he'd been present when the commandments were given? Otherwise, what business did he have to go and correct something that Moses said? You see, he is the God of the Old Testament. "Again, you have heard that it was said to those of old, 'You shall not swear falsely, but shall perform your oaths to the Lord.' But I say unto you..." Notice that distinction there. "You have heard it said, 'You have heard it said, but I say unto you.'" But I say, which shows you that whenever you say that you have heard it said, it was not, that bit was not the revealed mind of God. It was a set of commandments Moses was allowed to issue, because Moses was in the role of a pastor. And when you're in the role of a pastor, sometimes you must put some measures in place to keep the congregation in check. Paul the Apostle wrote to Titus, to Timothy, about what young women should do. Let them marry. Rather than getting into sort of behaviors that do not bring glory to God, let them marry. But in Corinthians, he said, "I wish everybody was like me and remained single." Can't you see a contradiction there? It's a contradiction. He's telling you that he wishes. Why? Because? He said, "Because of the evil of the present day, I wish you were single." And then he said, "Because you can get more done, because when you are married, you must cater to your partner's needs." But then he writes to Titus and to Timothy, says, "Let them marry." See now? There are things that you share because of the context. But we are not talking, you know, this is a deep teaching. I'm not going to go any further. Let me just stop there. Now, Jesus offered commentary and showed you that the Old Testament, even though there were all these commandments there, not every commandment revealed the heart of God. And he had come to reveal more fully the heart of God. And he could only have done that unless he was the God that gave the commandments in the first place. Okay, so he says, "Again, you have heard it said, 'To those of old, you shall not swear falsely, but shall perform your oaths to the Lord. But I say to you, do not swear at all, neither by heaven, for it is God's throne, nor by the earth, for it is his footstool, nor by Jerusalem, for it is the city of the great king; nor shall you swear by your head, because you cannot make one hair white or black. But let your yes be yes, and your no be no, for whatever is more than this is from the evil one.'" Somebody asked the question not long ago about whether people should make pledges. This is the passage you are looking for. It's from Matthew, chapter five, thirty-three to thirty-seven. "Don't make a pledge at all." You make a pledge, and then you find yourself under yoke of bondage. Don't make a pledge at all. Just let your yes be yes, and your no be no. If you can do that, that you glorify God. Anything above that is of the evil one. Now it came to pass, when Jesus had finished these sayings, that he departed from Galilee and came to the region of Judea, beyond the Jordan. "And great multitudes followed him, and he healed them there." The Pharisees also came to him, testing him and saying to him, "Is it lawful for a man to divorce his wife for just any reason?" This is what I was talking about earlier. "And he answered and said to them, 'Have you not read that he who made them at the beginning made them male and female? And said, For this reason a man shall leave his father and mother and be joined to his wife, and the two shall become one flesh? So then they are no longer two, but one flesh? Therefore what God has joined together, let no man separate, or put ascender.'" They said to him, "Why then did Moses command to give a certificate of divorce and to put them away, to put her away?" Sorry. "He said to them, 'Moses, because of the hardness of your hearts permitted you to divorce your wives; but from the beginning it was not so.'" You see now? There was an order in the beginning. In the beginning, it was not so. "And I say to you, whoever divorces his wife, except for sexual immorality, and marries another commits adultery. And whoever marries her who is divorced commits adultery." Matthew nineteen, one to eight. So here, Jesus offers such an in-depth commentary on something that the Pharisees thought was just clear cut. It was just clear cut. You don't like your wife anymore, just divorce her, give her a bill of divorce, a certificate of divorce, and then off she goes. You can go and marry another one. Which is just an indirect way of being able to have serial, you know, this is serial polygamy. Okay? Jesus said, "No." You see, the Pharisees were operating at the level of commandments. If it's not forbidden, it's allowed. Jesus said, "That's not how I was supposed to do in the beginning." In the beginning, Adam and Eve were not created to follow five thousand commandments. They were created to be imitators of God. They had fellowship regularly with God, and they were supposed to be transformed through that fellowship. God didn't give them six hundred and thirteen commandments, as he gave the Israelites. It wasn't necessary. And everything that God did, it was a pattern for them to see. He didn't give Adam two wives. He gave him one. Instead of saying, "That shall have only one wife," he simply made them male and female, so that they could see, "This is how it's supposed to be. You're not supposed to have multiple." Very simple. But the Pharisees, for the Pharisees, all these patterns, all this hard evidence in the Bible, didn't mean anything. Unless it's forbidden, it's allowed. And that was the same mentality of the Jews of those days. So Jesus said, "Because of the hardness of their hearts." Moses said, "Okay, okay, I tire." Remember, Moses wasn't just a lawgiver. He was also a judge. He used to sit down all day, from morning to evening, settling quarrels between them. This one said, this one, and this one said, "I want to divorce more," and okay, off you go. He was doing this all day. So he said, "You know what? Give a certificate. Go. Don't even come to me for a certificate. I'm tired." But in the beginning, it was not so. So what do we see? Jesus reveals the mind of God. Why? Because he is God. Because he was there when the commandments were issued. So he knew the intent behind the commandments. You see, the evidence that Jesus is God, it's overwhelming. It's overwhelming. It's actually shocking that the question should arise that, especially people who are from other faiths, saying that, "Oh, Jesus never said that he was God." This is, wait a minute. The evidence is overwhelming. It's overwhelming. And I'm so glad that this question was asked. I think the question you asked, but it wasn't directly that. I think it was more to do with who is Jesus, what's his identity? And this question has really, really helped us. None of the Old Testament prophets gave a commentary on the laws of Moses. Prophets merely castigated the people for not keeping the laws. But Jesus provided commentary and even corrected some of Moses' doctrine, showing that he was greater than Moses. Okay, I think I'm going to stop here. So to recap, Jesus showed through his works that he was God, that he is God. Because he himself said that he had a greater testimony than John. People had signed- Because he himself said that he had a greater testimony than John. People had sent to John to ask who he was. And then they said, but what about him? He is baptizing more people than you. Who is he? Referring to Jesus. John said, look, I told you, I am not him. I am not even worthy to do what? To untie his shoelaces, so to speak, or to do them up. I am just someone sent to prepare the way for him. He is the one. And the Bible says that when John said, behold the lamb of God who takes away the sins of the world, two of his disciples left, two. Left. Maybe some left later, but we only know of two. But John prepared the way so that people were ready for Jesus' message. Before John came, they were not thinking along the lines of baptism for the remission of sins. They were not thinking in terms of we are sinners, that we're seeking God and encounter with God. They were not looking for a Messiah that was going to forgive them their sins. They were looking for a Messiah that was going to free them from oppression, from the Romans. John prepared the way so that they would see Jesus for who he was. But Jesus said, I have something greater than John. The works that I do, they testify of me. And greater works shall you see, so that you may marvel. The Lord will, he said, the Father would show him even greater works to do, so that his disciples may marvel. And that's what happened when he raised Lazarus from the dead. When he walked on water, when he got back in the boat, the disciples worshipped him. They worshipped him because they just knew, that's it. That's it. This cannot be a human being. So the works of Jesus, they spoke about who he was. Much louder than anybody, any herald, any forerunner like John the Baptist. And we've seen how he turned water into wine, how he calmed the storm. We saw that God revealed his glory on the mount of Transfiguration. But we also saw that God only did it for a small, a select few. That he didn't go and broadcast all of that in Jerusalem, then he might have gathered crowds. But God was not looking for that kind of crowds. He was looking for true converts. And that that true conversion required seeing, you know, it's like you have to see through his humanity to see that he was God. And that took the grace of the Lord Jesus, he took the Holy Spirit to help you see that this person, this person that sweats, that eats the same food as you, that uses the bathroom just like you, how could he be God? It took the grace of God to do that. But then when someone saw that, it was clear that God had done work in their hearts and that their conversion was genuine. Okay, so I'll stop there. Thank you all for joining. I can see Evangeline here. Welcome back. Bishop Rita, welcome. Irene, Suzie, welcome. Fred, welcome. Okay, so who wants to kick us off? As usual, we like to have a discussion after the main teaching and question and answer time as well. So please feel free, if you have any questions, please put them, you know, yeah, unmute yourself and let us hear your questions. If you have any contributions, anything you didn't understand, please make your voice heard. Who will start us off? Okay, Bishop, anything to share today?
Not much, but I, I, I just want to say that today's teachings is so powerful. And Jesus has been around from creation till now. And, and thinking of that, I saw that in Genesis, Jesus was there through the judgies and chronicles everywhere, he was there. And what marvels me is the story about John the Baptist. I want us to, you know, think about John the Baptist too and see. Elijah being taken away, taken away where? Coming back.
Okay.
Well, you know, I want us to clear that too, because looking at Jesus Christ now, eh, he was at the beginning. Now, how about Elijah?
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I think we can do a study on Elijah at some point. Elijah is such a very, very interesting character in the Bible. And because, as you said, you know, he appeared in one of the, one of the, you know, the stories we talked about, Mount of Transfiguration. He was there and you're right, and he was taken up into heaven. So he's a very intriguing figure. But I think we'll probably would need to do a separate study on Elijah, yeah. Okay, good. Thank you for that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Good. Fred, anything to add? Anything to, any contribution from yourself?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And well, as by the message as always, anytime I have the opportunity to say. So this is never openly announced, actually said, by ways that I am God. And it does have its nature. Being God, he was so, so humble. So instead of a mark of great humility to be that great and yet to do to hold back. So it's something that I believe also a part for he wanted them to know through his work. Also teaching us not to be so quick to announce our importance or relevance and all those things. So his motive for wanting people to even know him was not out of arrogance or pride, even though he was God.
Yes.
And he said, if he told them, if he says he doesn't know something, he would be a liar like them. But though he did, he chose not to announce it. So that's one reason I take some Jesus.
Amen.
Thank you.
Amen, amen. Thank you for that. That's very powerful. Thank you. Okay, who wants to go next? Abba, I'll come to you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, good evening.
Yeah, uh, yeah, what was Fred said now? You know, I have observed one thing. That people who know much or like who are endowed, you know, with whether I'm talking about even like men of God or, you know, people who call themselves preacher, you know, people who know much, they are very humble. I don't know why um, the empty barrels make the most. I don't know. It's just, it's just a sign of, you know, it's just a sign humility. Anytime I see a humble man of God, I know that he's so well. Because it comes with it naturally. And like Fred said, you know, Jesus was so humble. And like you, I agree with Bishop, you know, he's been there since the beginning.
Amen.
Yeah, you have made this so clear. But you know, on the lighter side, you know, I always this miracle of heavy water is the wine.
Yes.
I just, you know, this argument, you've made this argument, I don't know whether it's trivial, but this argument that that wine, was it alcohol or? This wine, this wine business, because, you know, people argue that, no, it's not alcohol. Because of the fact that, you know, people say that alcohol, you know, as a priest, they don't have to drink alcohol. But this alcohol thing, I don't know, I have, you know, I've met, even met this ministers who drink, you know, like wines, some small winey for their heart, you know? And I don't see, me personally, I don't see anything wrong with that. But you know, in church, the, because of the fact that they talk against wine, that you don't have to drink alcohol, even the alcohol, the wine Jesus said, they said that, no, that is this wine, I don't know what they want to think.
Oh, yes, I've also come across those, those arguments before. And it's actually very interesting because there was something I was pondering earlier in the week, that the doctrines that you already hold will determine how you interpret any scripture that you come across. So if you come from a church or a Christian background that says you cannot drink, then every scripture in the Bible that you see where people were drinking, you will try to find a different explanation because you want it to fit your narrative, your belief system. That's how we are humans, humans, you know? A pastor, a preacher said that he once went to, where was it? Germany, I think he said. He was preaching and he said that whilst he was preaching, what do you think the people, the people, it wasn't in the church, it was by, it was a Christian gathering. They were sitting around tables. What do you think they were doing? Everybody had a jug of beer in front of them. They were drinking. We're Christians and they were drinking and listening. And they said, because they were drinking, they were more than happy for him to talk for as long as he wanted. He said, he's never been given the blank cheque like that before, to be able to talk as long as he want. We're drinking. Now, there are, you see, the Bible, in good proverbs, talks about alcohol, talks about giving, talks about wine being a mokka, then talks about giving it to somebody who is sorrowful, who shows the right from back then. You know, there was known that wine can cheer you up. Many people today self-medicate with alcohol. Okay, so alcohol has got those properties. It has got those properties. And it's not inherently evil. There's nothing evil in alcohol. It is a chemical created through fermentation. It is, there's nothing evil about alcohol. The same process that gives you alcohol gives you kinki. Okay, it's called fermentation. You stop the fermentation at some point and then you boil the thing and then you call it kinki. In, in, in Mexico, they call it tamale, they have, you know, something similar to agakinki. It's just fermentation process. It's nothing evil about it. But it's about how much you drink, why you need it, those are where the issues are. So efficiency says, do not be filled with wine. It doesn't say do not taste wine, do not be filled with wine, wherein there's debauchery. In other words, don't drink to excess where you disgrace yourself and misbehave, but be filled with the Holy Spirit. So you're looking for something to fail you, something to cheer you up, the Holy Spirit. There's nothing wrong with the wine, but why do you need it? You need it to lift up your mood. Hey, have you tried the Holy Spirit before? It'll do a better job. It's what the Bible is saying. But the wine is not forbidden. So Paul wrote to Timothy, he said, because of your many infirmities, don't just drink water, also take a little wine. In those days, they didn't have antibiotics, they didn't have anything. And alcohol does have medicinal properties in the sense that it can kill some germs. We use alcohol wipes to get rid of bacteria on our hands. So alcohol does have medicinal properties, but how much of it do you want to drink? So when you are secure in yourself and you know that you're not tempted by a drink, you can bring your whole bottle, I've got a bottle of alcohol downstairs in my kitchen right now that somebody gave it to us over Christmas. And it's there. It doesn't tempt me. Have no intention of doing anything with it. It's just there. Doesn't tempt me. But if I decided to pour myself a glass, nothing would happen. I would not subconceit, I would not, it's about why you're taking it, what it's supposed to do for you. Drinking to excess, that's where the problems start. You won't find a Bible verse that says that shall not drink alcohol or the alcohol is wrong. Once you've set yourself free from all of these narratives, you are now free to open your Bible and read it and see that Jesus turned water into wine, not grape juice. There's a difference between grape juice and wine. Sweet wine is because we have the technology now that we can create non-alcoholic wine. We have the technology to create non-alcoholic beer. It wasn't like that. If you stop the fermentation process, where you're going to end up with, it'll be sweet wine, but you'll still have alcohol. If you stop it at some point, you will still have alcohol. So, you know, it's totally unnecessary, all those, you know, twisting of the word of God, it's not necessary. You want to teach people how to live for God. There's a way to do it. You don't do it with do's and don'ts and trying to, you know, threaten them or frighten them or, or change the meaning of the word of God. Show them how to be imitators of God. Did Jesus go about drinking, getting drunk and staggering in the road? No. But he turned water into wine because the people had run out of wine. And I'm convinced that Jesus himself had had some of the wine that, that God finished, was human. It was natural in the Middle East, in today because of Islam, so most of the Middle East don't drink. More like in the Mediterranean when it comes to the north part, and of course Italy and places like that, yes, people drink. But it would have been ridiculous in those days to say that, you know, they went for a party, they went for a wedding and wine was served and then they didn't drink because they were Christians. That's not how it worked. In Corinthians, first letter to Corinthians, Paul rebuked the Corinthians. Do you know what he said? He said, when you guys come together for your love feast, your agape feast, some of you are drunk and others are empty. In other words, there were greedy Corinthians there who were drinking all the wines, while others had nothing to drink. Had they get drunk with grape juice? Or Coca-Cola? I don't think so. It was wine. Yeah, so you said on a lighter note, but actually there's a lot of teaching there.
Yeah, it's dark, I mean, you're right. I'm just having a good laugh, you know, I mean, you said it all. You know, you, you've explained it so well. And I agree with you. I don't know why, why they do that, you know? But you know, Jesus teaches, like you said, that, you know, this thing about praying against enemies and, you know, every time I go to church and they talk about enemies, Fred, I don't pray. I just stop praying. I don't pray. It, it doesn't, it doesn't sit well with me. It makes me feel some way.
Well done. Well done that you don't pray. Well done.
I don't pray. And you know, something got me so a bit furious on Sunday. Where two, two men who left our church, one died last year, I think around, that's into December. And then one died even just last week, we had the one we celebrated. And they left our church because they had issues with our pastor. And on Sunday, pastor was just on the prophet picture and he said, eh, those who left and think that this church will collapse, they would die one after the other.
Hey!
I just, I just, I just felt so bad. And you know, I, up until now, up until now, I can't believe that he said that. And everybody, you know, most people were quiet. Some people were nodding their head. I don't know what they were thinking. And you know, it has been a discussion going around that he said, he could say that. And I, I, I don't know, I don't know what to think again.
I mean, I think it's, it's just lack of love. That's the problem. Okay? I mean, I think it's um it's just lack of love, that's the problem, okay? We've come, we've allowed Christianity to turn into something, you see, the the Bible says the end of the commandment is love. In other words, any commandment that God is giving you, the outcome he really wants is that we should be filled with love. Because that's the seal of perfection. So imagine that you you go to church, you pray, you are there whenever the church building is open, you are, you know, the most active member, you're sweeping, you're doing, you are doing all of these things in the name of worshiping God. But you end up not having love in your heart. You end up, I mean, somebody leaves your church and that is proof that that person is your enemy. But even if it's your enemy, the Bible says, love your enemies. How can you wish death upon someone? It's not that he killed your your children, not that he came and robbed your house, not that he came and did something horrible to you. He just didn't identify with your messages anymore and left your church and you wish them death. I am very sorry to say this, but that's witchcraft. That's witchcraft. When you start wishing death upon somebody, that's what you go and study the history of witchcraft, that's how it works. You can either pronounce a blessing or you can pronounce a curse, that's the equivalent of a curse. From the pulpit? No, that's not Christianity. So you've done well not to pray alongside it. You need to, you you need to be very, very careful in an environment like that because, you know, the Bible says evil communication corrupts good manners. The people you surround yourself with, they will shape your thinking. You are very right, you've got a right instinct in thinking, no, this is not right. You are right, it's not right. There's something like that should come from the pulpit, it doesn't matter even if it doesn't come from the pulpit. If just members are saying, this needs to be corrected, this is not in line with the word of God. I'm sorry I came across that, but but I just think, you know, it has to be said, you know. What do you think?
Yeah, um, God bless you though, yes, yes, this is, I agree, this is what should have happened.
Yes, please ca- carry on, Fred.
Yeah, hmm, what our sister said, um, it's quite disturbing. I I used to think I had a problem. I find it so difficult to remain in a church. Because um, brother, I was examining myself and I was just wondering. Because this Ghanaian church is anywhere you go, I I don't know for some reason, it's just a purely unspiritual, no love, just need for money and practices that you want, that should this be in a church? Is there on the hill? So I just ask myself, is something wrong with me or is it pride? But um, it is is the, it's as if the church is just some commercial. These days, the churches we have in Ghana, most of them, at least those that have attended, most of them, just some commercial center. And our pastor, as he's growing, he's he's grooming his um son to take over the church. And you just wonder, are we just running some monarchy or business or something? And the type of things they say about money, my goodness, I thank you, I don't, let me say something, I'm even fumbling. The other day I met a Muslim and I spoke to her, I I, by God's grace, she accepted Christ after I prayed to her, she was almost crying. So I took her to church. And on that Sunday, oh my God, I was so heartbroken. The whole teaching was about money and why should you bring plenty money to church and why people are scared if they don't bring enough money? And after that, we spoke about the harvest and how a Muslim will come and be the chairman because it's rich and he's an empty. And um, it's not even about winning him over. And the the Muslim lady was there. And to me, that was the worst Sunday I had ever experienced in my life. And um, I think we either have a drought of the word of God, like what we are receiving here is is very exceptional. And I I just don't know, I don't know if it's just me or some pride or something, I'm just just by the way, thank you.
Thank you, it's not, it's not you, it's um, it's, I mean, we don't want to talk too much about, you know, the works, the works of darkness, but it's 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 everywhere. It's so difficult now to find, to find a place where the the emphasis, the focus is only purely on the word of God. You know, it's it's, I mean, I really, my heart goes out to this, this young convert, you know, to have left Islam. Where they are not chasing you for money, that's the thing the Muslims don't do. They will not chase you for your money. In the Islamic states, they don't even have income tax. They don't charge you income tax, free, your salary, you get the whole amount. They don't believe the Quran doesn't teach income tax. They believe in giving interest-free loans because it's against their religion to charge you interest. And we are supposed to be the light of the world. What light are we shining on them? When they've got standards that we don't, we can't even dream of. I mean, it's such a shame, such a shame, to convert somebody from there to bring, to bring him from darkness to light, only to discover more darkness in the church. How can that be a good thing? How can that be a good thing? I mean, I I, it takes courage, it's not for me to tell people what to do, it takes courage to make certain decisions, but Jesus said, be careful what you hear, be careful how you hear. You and I are responsible for what goes through the ears. We are responsible. And if we imagine every Sunday, we are being subjected to something that is not only not biblical, but it's actually demonic, it's from the word of, the word of darkness. How can you grow spiritually being subjected to the doctrines of demons? It's like we've been bewitched. Once something is called church, the church of this, this, the church of that, we switch off because it's called church. So we come and we sit down there and any poison be, so imagine the devil now sees that deceiving these people is so easy. All I need is to get some of my agents to wear suits and to learn a few Bible passages. And I can deceive millions. I can deceive millions. He doesn't have to try hard anymore. When I was a student, when I was a young person, we, the temptation was, oh, the eh, eh, the that this person used to come to fellowship, then he stopped coming, then he started going to disco or chasing girls or thing. That was the, that was the pattern, that was how somebody deviated from the path, from the, from the path of God. Today, you don't have to. You don't have to. You could be going to church regularly, but he has taken over the pulpit. Why he couldn't tell you in the disco, he would tell you here. It's not right. It's not right. And I pray that with this Bible study, that the Lord is staring something in our hearts. So that when we go home, we open our own Bibles and we study, we ask God questions, we want to know, thank God for ourselves, we want to know the truth for ourselves. And then the next thing the Bible says, do not be hearers only deceiving yourselves. Do you know what it means? You can be a, an eternal student. An eternal student. Enrode in university, ten years later, he's still in university, never graduated. You can become an eternal student. You deceive yourself. The word is supposed to transform you and then you are supposed to take the word and say, okay, now that I have heard the word, what is my duty, what is my responsibility? What now do I do with the word? Action. If you know this to be true, what's your next step? Action. Because knowing the truth lays responsibility upon you. You then have to do something with it. Can you know the truth and not do anything about it? It's up to you to decide what you need to do. But you cannot con- continue to be in an environment where you're not growing spiritually. But on top of it, you are being poisoned, being taught practices that Muslims don't teach each other and call it church. I will stop there. Irene, we haven't heard from you.
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, yes, I've been blessed, I mean, uh, it's been, it's been a blessing. For me, I think that um, wrong doctrines have have destroyed many Christians in the church than even what the devil is doing. Wrong doctrines have, or or wrong teachings have um destroyed the church. Now, I don't know whether it's a new trend coming. You see, men of God coming to say, well, what I thought in the past was false. So if I wrote books on this or I said this about this, now I know the truth and the truth is this. And it's becoming like, I I've I've studied and seen that now, that is a new trend happening. People have, I mean, many people have been destroyed by wrong doctrines. Today, eh, a lady who was, who is in a national service was sitting by me, she 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 knows that um, I love things of, because I am often sharing the word of God with her. And she said, um, madam, I want to ask you a question, eh, I I need help with something. My, my, my cousin, she has spiritual marriage and we don't know what to do ab- about it. And I think she has spiritual marriage. I said, oh, eh eh everywhere she goes, they tell her that she's married spiritually and she has three children. In the realms of the spirit, she has three children. So she cannot give birth physically and she can't, because of that, she's not even getting anybody to marry. And then I asked her one question, I said, every, everything that we know as Christians is built on the word of God, scripture. Luckily, the word of God serves as a guide for us so that we 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 wouldn't deviate or we would know what the Lord requires of us. Now, looking at the inclusion of marriage from beginning of scripture, we 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 saw eh, evil spirits um doing things to people, eh, some causing eh insanity, a pleasant bad. Nowhere have I seen in scripture that eh, there was somebody and was spiritually married and gave birth to children. So for me, I said, madam, you don't understand, it's only one prophet who has seen that. A lot of men of God have seen it and are saying that. So I asked her that, so this, they they said, because of that, the lady's stomach is big and no more, like, men don't propose to her. And I asked her that, has she gone to the hospital also to see what is well eh, well, for all you know, maybe there is a fibroid or there's something that is causing that. And she said, yes, eh, she has the fibroid too, but that is not why the stomach is big, it's the children that she has had in the realms of the spirit. And I asked, okay, fine. So the fact, why is she not doing anything about it? I said, eh, because the men of God have told her that if you like, she does something about that, eh, because it's a spiritual problem, they'll use that to kill eh. I I said that there was a colleague in my school who came from another school. She had been suffering with fibroid for about seven years. And she had not full much blood, she, I mean, as soon as you you look at her, you would think that she would be dying the next day. And teachers were telling her that, look, go and have it removed. And she was also, you know, she was moving from church to church, they were telling her that this thing, if you you remove it, you will die, eh, because it's spiritual, if you remove it, you will die. And I remember one woman sat there and said, look, you are a young lady, so you are going through. You have been praying, you have been moving from one place to the other. If it's, if it was a spiritual problem, the doctors will not see it when they do a scan, they will not be able to diagnose anything wrong with you. But this one, doctors have seen what is causing your problem. The problem has a name and then there's a solution to it. But you are letting the fear that they put in you, like, just destroy your life. Long story short, she eventually eh found the strength and she did it. And her life is so much better. The point I'm trying to make is that there are certain things that doctrine or African churches have done to us, that is, is more destructive than what Satan is doing behind the scene. Because it's it it's almost, eh eh it's almost as if I I I I don't know what kind of spirit it is. And like Fred, I share the same opinion. I, when I go to a church and I'm, I've loved one teaching about the church, the second, by the third time I go to the church, I I I ask myself that, should I be here? Because by the third service that I go to, I'll hear something that I'll be like, ah, no, where from this or where from this teaching? It's a real struggle, but I I just pray that the the Lord will help us. And in in our small ways, we will also teach others, because some of the things, you know, when I just said to this lady that, look, me have not found it in scripture. She was looking at me strangely initially, that eh, are you saying that there's no spiritual marriage? Like, mm mm big, big men of God have said there is spiritual marriage, to like, are you saying, I said, okay, if they have said, me, show me in the Bible, if you show me in the Bible, I will believe it, but I've not seen it. So I don't, I I don't believe that eh, somebody can, I I I I I believe we can make room for the, for for spirits to, to um, do all that.
I think, I think what needs to, I think what needs to happen really is um, just as you were saying about the, we ourselves need to now start our own Bible studies. You see, as you have, as you're you're learning here, you then look for opportunities to share with other people because the darkness is incredible. If we don't speak up, if we don't do anything, the darkness will get worse. You know, one of the things that the devil managed to so, he succeeded in persuading the church to believe in is that all problems can be solved, especially in Africa, all problems can be solved through prayer because prayer is the key. And we've been praying, we are in our churches praying while the continent grows darker and darker and darker spiritually. It's the truth that sets people free, the truth. And pardon me, the truth must be spoken, the truth must be spoken. So we need to share the truth with people, we need to let people know the truth. And that is how the 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 darkness will be dispelled, you know, so well done for doing your bit in sharing the truth with this lady. And that's what we all need to do. And I also like, I know time is fast spent, so that's why I ca- I cut you short there, sorry. But I I'd like us to spend some, a few minutes praying because sometimes prayer is necessary. Praying, one, that God will give us boldness. Two, that he will give us the desire to see change. And that this desire to see change will mean that when we come across darkness, when we come across darkness, we will not keep quiet. That we see people who are living in darkness, we won't just walk away, that we will look for opportunities to let light permeate their lives. Would you all like to pray this prayer with me?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so let's, let's spend a a couple of minutes praying. Hallelujah, Father, we just want to thank you for being such a wonderful God and for bringing us together to learn at your feet. Father, you have taught us today that hearers only deceive themselves. That we will become perpetual students if we don't apply what we have heard. Therefore, Father, we are praying for boldness, just as the first church prayed for boldness when they faced persecution and threats from the Sahindran. They prayed for boldness and they also prayed that you might stretch your hound to do miracles, to glorify Jesus. Father, we pray the same prayer today, that you will fill us with boldness. And above what the desire, they desire to see the light of God permeate our surroundings. And above what the, the desire, they desire to see the light of God permeate our surroundings, the people whom we know, people we come into contact with will send the grace of God that is in our lives and upon our lives. That the light that is in our lives will permeate their lives as well. Father, we pray that you may place on our paths, people with attentive ears, people whom you have prepared, even as Jesus said, those whom the Father draws will come to me. So Father, we pray that you will draw these people, bring them to us. Let them cross our paths, the people who, who, whose hearts you've prepared and who will be willing to be set free. That you may bring us into contact with these people. And that the light that you have poured in our heart, that you shed in our hearts, may also be transferred onto them, into their lives. Father, empower us to play our role in bringing light to the church and to dispel the darkness that we see in the African church today. Thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
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 Amen, amen. Okay, so thank you all for joining, thank you all for being a blessing and continue to be a blessing, you know, um, let's take the word on board. Let's look for opportunities to be examples, um, for Jesus' sake, for the glory of Jesus, amen. God bless you and we'll meet again next week.